Welcome to the Murfreesboro City Council. It's May 5th, 2022 at 6 o'clock. Before we start, Vice Mayor Madeline Skels Harris has our prayer. But today is National Day of Prayer all over our country. We were able to start today celebrating at 6:30 this morning with the mayor's prayer breakfast that Greenhouse Ministry scheduled and put that together. But it's important, an important day for all of our country to be able to come together in prayer for not only our country, but our states and our local communities. So Vice Mayor, the prayer and the pledge is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. May we bow our heads, please? Dear Heavenly Father, we just come to you, Lord, just to say thank you. You are more worthy than that, Lord. There's no words that can describe you. And Lord, you are a miracle worker. You are a miracle worker, Lord. When I, when my body I thought had totally given out, you just stepped in, Lord, and you healed my body. And I am so grateful. I'm so honored to be able just to say thank you, Lord. Thank you so much for healing my body. In the treatments I went through, Lord, you were there. In the pharesis, when they took all the blood out of me and as they were putting it back in, Lord, you're just, you're just awesome. I just felt your spirit. I felt angels, angels just dispensing all around my body, Lord. I felt my prayer warriors all over the city and other states, Lord, just praying for me. I just cannot thank you enough for healing my body. And the doctor said you were healed, and I thank you, Lord. I thank you for this day. I thank you for the little things that we so take for granted, just like being here this very moment, Lord. It's a blessing. It's a blessing, Lord. When we wake up in the morning and when we open our eyes, it's a blessing. When we're able to feed ourselves, dress ourselves in a comfortable environment, Lord, just this is all of your work. And Lord, I cannot give you back a portion of anything you've given me. I just promise to be obedient and to worship you and praise you. Lord, we pray for the children that are in our schools. Lord, we just ask that you just protect them, Lord. Protect the teachers and all of the staff. Protect the director that's over the schools, Lord. Just give them insights into what you would have for them to do. We ask that you protect our firefighters, our police, all our safety people, all our medical people. And Lord, just reach down and just protect just a little, just a plain man or woman, Lord. And we pray for the homeless. And Lord, as we get ready to start our meeting, we ask that you move in the midst of us and that we conduct the meeting the way you would be pleased. And again, Lord, I just can't thank you enough. This is my prayer in your darling son's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's my pleasure tonight. We have three different ceremonial items that we need to present. Trey, I don't know if you want to come up first, so that way you can, you can stand here. Had the opportunity, I think it was a couple of weeks ago, right, Director Duke? That we got to go to, come to Black Fox and the governor was here. A nice, a very nice lady that I, that I met from California had come in. And there are very few events where they literally will not tell you what it's for. I just know that Lisa Trail was like, you need to be here at this time. And I know all the council members, you need to be here at this time, but we can't tell you what it's for. Much like marriage, when you're told to do that. So, and, and just like marriage with my wife, I was at Black Fox Elementary to be able to see something that I have not seen since I've been mayor. So I want to ask Ms. Raven Brooks to come up. So we have a proclamation. Ms. Raven Brooks earned a bachelor's degree in early childhood education from Middle Tennessee State University in 2015. She is currently enrolled in the university's Administration and Supervision Graduate Program. And whereas Raven is a member of the faculty at Black Fox Elementary School as a second grade teacher, she is the first person in the Murfreesboro City School System to receive one of the National Milken Family Foundation Educators of the Year Awards. She is one of only two teachers in the state of Tennessee to receive one this year. And whereas she was presented this award by the state of Tennessee Governor Bill Lee, Tennessee Commissioner of Education Dr. Penny Schwen, Black Fox Principal Tiffany Strevel, Dr. Trey Duke, Murfreesboro City Schools Director, and Dr. Jane Foley, the Senior Vice President for the Milken Educator Awards. And whereas Raven is being honored as one of the nation's top early career educators for her impressive accomplishments and promise of what she will accomplish for students in the future, she is very dedicated to her student academics and well-being. Now therefore, I Shane McFarland, Mayor of the City of Murfreesboro, Tennessee, do hereby proclaim May 5th, 2022, as Raven Brooks Day in the City of Murfreesboro, and I urge all the citizens to join in this well-deserved recognition. Thank you. That she got a big cardboard check for $25,000 for being.
Well deserved, yep.
So Dr. Duke would ask if you wanted to donate that back to the city? Congratulations. Thank you. Raven, do you want to introduce yourself? Who is your family that's here?
Hi. Okay, so my family, so my family is here. My Auntie Lysia, my mom, this is my Auntie Regina, and my Aunt Linda as well. So I'm just happy that they could be here to celebrate me today.
Now, I have to say, if I had known that Regina... Regina, how long have you worked, worked with the City of Murfreesboro?
Thirty-two years.
Thirty-two years in the finance department, so. Don't let Regina get a hold of that money. Thank y'all for coming. We appreciate y'all. And most importantly, for, I'm, I'm sure Raven couldn't have gotten to where she is without her family and what she's learned from y'all. So thank you for, for what you've done. And I know you're just as proud as she is to be able to get that award. So, and Doc, Director Duke, there's one other Milken Award winner that's in the City of Murfreesboro. Who is that?
That's me.
There you go. All right. All right, so we have another award. And this, this award is backdated, our proclamation, from February the 19th, but we haven't been able to get LaShan here. So LaShan, you want to come up? I'm not going to ask you to take your heels off because you're about six inches taller than I am right now, especially, especially with the crown. Ms. LaShan Dixon is the Rutherford County Public Health Director. And whereas she's the 2022 National Title Holder of the United States of America's Miss Pageant System, crowned February 19th, 2022. Whereas the United States of America Pageants are designed to encourage women to strive to achieve their hopes, dreams, goals, and aspirations. The United States of America Pageant's motto is to empower women, inspire others, and uplift everyone. And whereas Ms. Dixon is passionate about helping others in the community, has provided hundreds of hours of community service through her platform, Walking With a Purpose. This platform is a self-esteem program created to help women and girls break away from mental incarceration and self-imprisonment related to self, to low self-esteem, doubt, depression, suicide, and dream killing. And whereas Ms. LaDixon is CEO of LaShan Dixon, LaShan Dixon LLC, a business that is her passion to empower individuals to feel confident both on and off the runway. Additionally, she helps people discover their wonderful attributes through workshop and trainings. And whereas she's a leader in the Rutherford County community for more than 10 years, hosting multiple community events, sitting on several boards, including most recent nonprofit Main Street of Murfreesboro. And whereas the Rutherford County and Murfreesboro community is very proud to celebrate the United States of America, Miss National Title Holder, LaShan Dixon, her achievement and dedication of service. This is not in the proclamation, but I've had the, the pleasure of working with LaShan. Her previous director passed away during COVID. And so LaShan came in at probably the worst time that you could come into a, to a new job on dealing with a pandemic, the loss of her director and being able to rally employees around, around her leadership. And I can tell you, she did that flawlessly. She worked with the cities, with the counties, level-headed, very calm. And most importantly, she was able to be able to let our residents know ultimately that everything was going to be okay. So it's my pleasure that I Shane McFarland, Mayor of the City of Murfreesboro, Tennessee, do hereby proclaim, and we're going back to February 19th, 2022, as LaShan Dixon Day in the City of Murfreesboro, and urge all citizens to join me in this recognition.
Well, good evening, everyone. I just want to take this opportunity to introduce my loving and supportive family. I would not be here without my village and my amazing man beyond my dreams, my husband, Lamar Dixon. And my beautiful baby girl, who is a Salem saint at one of the best schools in Murfreesboro City Schools, London Dixon. Once again, thank you all for this amazing honor and this, this truly an accomplishment that I not only look to continue to do here in our state of Tennessee, but throughout the United States. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Hey, so our last award, and these are really, I, I think this is a first, that we're, we're giving honorary stars awards to individuals who are actually not employed with the City of Murfreesboro. But I got an email a while back and then multiple subsequent phone calls. I'm not going to mention the patient's name in violation, I don't want to violate any federal laws, but this lady lives inside the City of Murfreesboro, and she was telling me the whole story of she had fallen out of her chair and she was on the floor for a couple of hours. And luckily, her neighbor came over to help her. They couldn't get her back into her, her chair. So they called 911 and the Rutherford County EMS showed up. And so she just was impressing upon me the situation, the vulnerability that she was in, how that Rutherford County EMS came in, how they were compassionate, how they helped her, how they made her feel better, and ultimately how they got her back up in her chair. And so I didn't know this at the time that it was Rutherford County EMS, and we had to go through the process, and we thought it was the fire department. And then when we realized that we didn't have anyone in the fire department that was named with, with, I'll introduce them here in a second, we didn't have those names. So then our, talked to Chris Clark, who we all know. And so Chris, we were trying to track down the date, and Ms. Lowe couldn't remember, or the person couldn't remember the date. So we were trying to figure out, so ultimately, we ended up figuring out who provided the service. And, you know, there's been a lot of discussion over the last couple of years on services and how we work together. And, and not one time has there ever been the discussion that the, the people who are in the field do not do a good job. And so I want to be able to introduce to you Tara Melton. She's a paramedic and EMT, Macklin Eckert, who receiving the first nine-employee Stars Award for the City of Murfreesboro. And they also have their new director, Brian Gaither, who is on the job for about a month and a half, two months now?
Three months.
Three months. So he, Brian is the new director who took Carl Huggins' place. And Brian, how long have you been at Rutherford County EMS?
Twenty-six years.
Twenty-six years. And Chris Clark continues, and Chief Fokes, talk about the, the, the great interaction between those two organizations. It's just my pleasure to give the awards to Tara Melton and EMT Macklin Eckert. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you, bud. Thank you for your service. All right, we'll move into the consent agenda. You have 12 items that are on your agenda. And LaShan, LaShan, you are welcome to stay, but you really don't have to.
Thank you, yes.
No problem. Thank you. And I'll grab that crown from you later on. Wear that to the next council meeting. All right, you have 12 items on the consent agenda.
Move for approval. Second.
Motion to second. Ms. Brown, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. You have the minutes from the April 7th through the April 27th meeting of 2022. Are there any additions or deletions to the minutes?
There aren't any. I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion to second, Ms. Brown.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. We'll move to old business. You have ordinance 22003 to amend the city code regarding retail liquor stores. This is second and final reading.
Move for approval.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Item 15, ordinance 22004 to amend the city code regarding special event hours for beer sales, second and final reading.
Second.
Motion to second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. New business, you have resolution 22R11. This is fiscal year 22, city schools budget amendment. Director Duke?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, I'm presenting a resolution for your approval that includes three budget amendments, all of which were approved by the school board on April 26th. The first is to recognize new grant money from the state in the amount of $2,119,291 for our 2022 summer learning camps. The grant covers teacher salaries, instructional supplies, transportation, crossing guards, and all other needed staff and materials needed to host our summer school program this year. The second amendment is to budget additional local option sales tax revenues to address personnel changes in our payroll department, which included the vacation payout of a long-term employee. And finally, the third amendment is to budget a new grant in the amount of $350,000 for FY '22 and '23. Murfreesboro City Schools was awarded this additional grant as a reward for being selected as a Tennessee best-for-all district. The funds will be used to hire nine educational assistants to assist with intervention programs in our schools, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Move for, excuse me, I move for approval.
Second.
Motion to second. Ms. Brown, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we have fiscal year 23, recommended water rate increase. This is water re, or water resources, and this is ordinance 22009 for first reading. Ms. Gore?
Mayor McFarland, Council, thank you for the opportunity. This was something I really had intended to give you at your work, at the workshop last month, but at the time, we got on to other more solid waste issues. But I'd like to, to kind of briefly go through the rationale behind the ordinance and the rate increase, if you'll entertain me. We do a cost of service study every other year. You can see our latest is 2021. You can see that we've over-recovered since 2013, and that over-recovery has been gradually increasing, which means our rate design is covering our rate revenue requirements, our rate revenue is, is covering our rate requirements. It's primarily sewer because we get growth. So you can see in this particular example, we're about 6.7 million in excess revenue. When you go to that FY '26 condition, that five-year pro forma, we're going to add about 5.35 million in expenses, added revenue, about four and a half. So we're still going to have a, almost a $6 million recovery. That's 13.7%. That can cover, if we wanted to go get a loan, our debt. Let's just say that the water resource recovery facility expansion was required. We can cover, that delta will cover about an $81 million principal amount at a 20-year 4% rate. So the water is a different story. That's an overall recovery. The water, we're showing a net 1.6 million under recovery. That's just because our water system is not growing. That growth revenue is not being factored in. So we do have about 2.2 million in added expenses, but only about 433,000 in added revenue. And we were, we just over-recovered in FY '21. So long and short, as I'm asking for a, you can see a 5/8 inch through 2-inch meter, what I've highlighted in yellow would be the minimum, a minimum monthly increase ranging from 83 cents to $1.72 over those two meters. I know you all like for us to forecast the rate design a little bit, so I want to talk about that just a little bit. This particular rate increase would cover about 326,000, so about 20% of our projected under recovery. If you look at a, a rate design over four years, where we keep, we actually raise $2.5 to the minimum for our sewer, and we, we lower our commodity rate on sewer by 67 cents per thousand. And we add $4 minimum to our water minimum, and we keep our commodity rate the same. That, that does try to pivot around that average bill. We're looking between a 1 and 1.5% rate increase each year. But it actually lowers our overall recovery in, in '26 because right now, you've got large users subsidizing the lower consumption users. Saying all that, it's about a 1.5% difference. We would not bring in about $600,000. We'd be about $600,000 less than what we projected with no rate adjustments. And that covers our delta now, instead of covering an $81 million loan, we could cover 72.5 million. So it's, 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 it's an adjustment, but it does lower that sewer commodity rate over several years. And this is kind of what it looks like to the, to the residential user. Those, those purple dots are our affordability index for one person through five-person family. That's 4% of a very low income earner, or 50% of the medium household. Right now, we're at about $67.69 per month. Our minimum is almost $19. We're at $9.33. That's a combined 1,000 gallons for water and sewer. Our cost of service says that we really should be at $40.23 per month and at $5.55 per 1,000 gallons. The rate design I just showed you kind of doesn't really split that in the middle, but it does raise our minimum to 25.44, and it decreases our 1,000 gallon commodity charge to the $8.66. It's a lot of math, a lot of projections, but that's why we do these. We've been doing these cost of service studies since 2007 now, so I've gotten pretty adept at understanding where we're at and where we need to be. It is probably time for us to start looking at moving our, our sewer commodity rate down because we, we're trending up on our over-recovery. So, but with that being said, the, the ordinance in front of you tonight is just adding these, the dollar, the 83 cents, buck 31, buck 72 on those various sized meters. Next year, we would start declining that commodity rate on sewer, if you approve it. But I'm open for any questions, if you have any.
Any questions for Ms. Gore?
Good work. I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion to second. Ms. Brown, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We'll move to land use matters. You have zoning for property along Northwest Broad Street, amending ordinance 22OZ08.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor McFarland and members of council. Our first item tonight for public hearing is the rezoning or kind of a different kind of rezoning than we normally see. This is to remove the portion of the proposed legacy property that is in blue from the Gateway Design Overlay District Number One, GDO One. This property was approved on second reading to be zoned CH and GDO One on April 21st. It will go into effect, that, that zoning and annexation will go into effect tomorrow. So one of the things that was, that was mentioned at the public hearing on April the 7th was that we would be back to discuss the removal of a portion of the property from the Gateway Design Overlay District Number One because of the nature of the proposed development, the Legacy Sports Tennessee development. So as I mentioned, the area in the blue is the area that we proposed to remove from the GDO One. And the area in the green along Northwest Broad Street is the area that we would propose to leave in the GDO Number One. And in a moment, I'll show you their, their concept plan, their conceptual site plan that shows how we arrived at that, at that proposed boundary line. I will mention that the Planning Commission held a public hearing on this matter last night and recommended its approval to council. The, I'll show you the concept plan. And you'll see the area, here's Broad Street right here, and the proposed boundary kind of frames the front of the site. All those, all those buildings that you see in blue are the proposed retail, restaurant, hospitality uses that would be developed along the frontage of the site along Northwest Broad Street. And so those are more traditional commercial buildings that, that we feel the design standards in the Gateway Design Overlay District are more applicable towards. The area, the, the, the large pinkish-red area are the large indoor athletic facilities that are proposed with the legacy site. Those are large buildings, housing, large expanses of, of indoor athletic facilities, basketball courts, hockey rinks, buildings that would be more difficult to fit neatly within our, the architectural requirements of our Gateway Design Overlay District. And to the rear of, of that, those pinkish-red buildings are all of the athletic fields that they propose, soccer fields, softball fields, pickleball courts, and baseball fields at the rear of the site. This is a proposed public street that would wrap around and go through the, the middle of the site. So we recommend, staff and the Planning Commission both recommend the removal of the 238 acres as advertised from the Gateway Design Overlay District Number One. And in the agenda materials, there are, there are a number of the Gateway Design Overlay District regulations that, that we have enumerated, that, that, that we believe would be problematic for the proposed development because it is, it is a unique type development, one that, with, with unique needs, especially for those large buildings and the athletic fields. The design guidelines, the citywide design guidelines would still apply, but the design guidelines, when it comes to architecture, allows for a greater degree of flexibility with exterior material. with exterior materials, which would be, which would fit better with these large buildings. There are also some landscaping requirements that would be a little bit heftier in the Gateway Design Overlay District that, that wouldn't seem to fit in well with the, with the large expanses of athletic fields. And also things such as fencing. Woven fence material and chain link fence materials would be prohibited in the Gateway Design Overlay District where visible from a public right-of-way. We would expect a number of those fields to utilize such fencing, so we would not want to prohibit those types of fence materials for those athletic fields. As I mentioned, the Planning Commission did recommend approval of this request, and we'll be happy to answer any questions before or after the public hearing. Mr. Matt Taylor, representing Legacy, is in the audience. If you have any questions for him regarding how the Gateway Design Overlay District regulations may or may not fit in with the proposed development design. He's evaluated that as well. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Blomley?
All right, seeing none, we'll, we'll need to hold a public hearing for the removal of, of this approximately 238 acres. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, if you'll come to the podium, if you'll state your name, your address, you'll have three minutes as an individual, five minutes as representing a group. If you'll keep all questions or directed to the council, we'll get those answered at the end of the public hearing. All right, this public hearing is open. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and we'll consider on first reading ordinance 22OZ08.
Second.
Motion second. Ms. Brown, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
No.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we'll move to item 19. This is amending the zoning ordinance regarding industrial accessory structures, recreational field lighting, and floodplain regulations. Mr. Blomley.
Thank you, Mayor McFarland. There are three components, as you mentioned, to this ordinance amendment. The first component deals with the height of industrial accessory structures. In the past, we have been approached by potential economic development opportunities for industrial uses, uses that, that would necessitate structures greater than the 75-foot maximum building height in our three industrial zoning districts. And so what we have done in, in response to that, to be ready for, for those opportunities, is to propose an ordinance amendment that would allow for 100-foot tall accessory structures in the industrial zoning districts for industrial uses under certain criteria. So, so examples of these would be, would be storage silos, and we have a number of these in town already, a number of these that are, that are, meet our current 75-foot maximum height requirements. But with this, with this proposed ordinance amendment, it would enable taller accessory structures under certain circumstances. And I'll show you some examples of those existing accessory structures, existing storage buildings. Mr. Aguilara on our team put together some nice examples. Here's an example of a storage silo at General Mills. As I mentioned, none of these examples exceed the maximum 75-foot building height requirement now, but they're good examples of instances that are existing in town that are already utilizing this type of structure. Here's at Heritage Farms Dairy. And Rich Products. So what we propose is to allow accessory structures for industrial uses in industrial zones to be up to 100 feet tall. However, those structures must be equal, or must be set back from all property lines equal to its height. And there was some discussion at Planning Commission, and the ordinance was revised per the Planning Commission's recommendation to make the separation for any such structure greater than 75 feet, a minimum of 600 feet from any adjacent or any contiguous residential property. So if there was, and there are some limited instances where there are residential zoning, where there's residential zoning directly adjacent to industrial zoning. If that was the case, 100-foot tall accessory structure, 100-foot tall storage silo would have to be a minimum of 600 feet from that adjacent residential property. The next proposed change is clarification with regards to the height of recreation field lighting. And back in 2020, we amended the zoning ordinance to, to clarify that, that recreation field lighting at areas zoned P Park and recreation fields that are accessory to existing, or accessory to institutional group assembly uses such as churches or schools could be up to 80 feet in height. What we're trying to do now is to comprehensively address where there, all instances where there could be recreation fields. And for legacy sports, for example, that's classified as a commercial outdoor amusement, but our current ordinance doesn't address recreation field lighting for commercial outdoor amusements. So we've added the commercial outdoor amusements to the list of types of recreation fields where an 80-foot tall light fixture would be, would be permitted. And on, in certain instances where that commercial outdoor amusement was at least 50 acres, then the height of the light fixture could be up to 100 feet tall. But any, any such 100-foot light fixture would have to be a minimum of 300 feet from any adjacent residentially zoned property. We've also added language in the ordinance after some discussion at the Planning Commission level that, that the lighting must be, evidence must be provided that the lighting will be directed downward and not outward, so as not to project light spill over on, and glare onto adjacent properties. One of the things that, that we wanted to point out and that we provided to the Planning Commission were some examples of, of light fixtures at existing facilities here in Murfreesboro. And one of the things that, that was really evident when we looked at the older light fixtures, here's, here's at the existing Segal Park closer to, to 231, and you'll notice that there's much more glare with these fixtures. But if you go back to the newer light fixtures on the Jordan Farm, the light is contained very well with these light fixtures to the site itself. The third change to the proposed ordinance is some language to our floodplain management regulations, which is contained within our zoning ordinance. And those floodplain management regulations are administered by our department and by the engineering department. There is some language that's, that is, was recommended by the state floodplain management coordinator and vetted by Mr. Huddleston. And so the language that we are proposing is, is what the state has provided to us. And what it does, one of the primary modifications is to add that a conditional letter of map revision approved by FEMA is required prior to allowing a development to modify or encroach in the floodway and/or increase the base flood elevations. That's, those are the amendments in a nutshell. Sorry, I was a little bit long-winded. There's a lot to go through. Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on March the 2nd and deferred action until March 16th. Some changes were made at that meeting, and then the Planning Commission voted to recommend its approval. I'll be happy to answer any questions before or after the public hearing.
Any questions for Mr. Blomley?
All right, seeing-
I'll make one comment before the public hearing, just for the, what it's worth for y'all to be considering, is that one of the things that I kind of had an original issue with at the Planning Commission level was that height of the, you know, of the height of the light going up. But after we kind of talked about the angles and the, how, how these new LED lights, essentially raising the height allows you to point them straight down instead of pointing out, you know, this out forward so you can see the ball crossing the air. They don't have to point them up if you can raise them up and they can shoot it more straight down. So it was just sort of an interesting thing I didn't think of until we, we sort of got in and started asking questions, so just thought I'd pass that along.
You know, we were out at Barfield last night, and we've, the city's going through and changing, not necessarily the lights, but they're changing the bulbs. And so you can look and see the bulbs that are LED and the bulbs that are not LED, and it makes me envious of seeing the Jordan Farms and how well lit, and there's really no light pollution outside of the field. At some point, I know that's going to end up being a discussion we'll have to have. I see Thomas and Angela shaking their head. That'll be a discussion that we'll have to have with our existing facilities as we start renovating and replacing lights. But the Jordan Farm, if you've not seen those lights-
Oh, yeah.
-you, you can be a neighborhood that's 1,000 feet away from them, and you're getting no lights coming off of those. I mean, it's, it's amazing how those are designed now.
I think, I think a picture says a thousand words, or is worth a thousand words.
I was going to say, sometimes you don't understand what the difference is in a picture, but that's what it is. I mean, it's just-
That's a major difference.
It's black when you get not very far away. It's dark, so.
Yep. All right, seeing none, we'll open the public hearing to amend this zoning ordinance. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and we'll consider on first reading ordinance 22O06.
Second.
Motion second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we'll move to items that we have on motion. Number 20, you have Hangar One Change Order Number Five.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. I'm here to seek your approval for Hangar One Change Order Number Five in the amount of $78,000. This change order amount includes a change in flooring materials at a cost of about $2,000. These flooring materials are better quality and will be easier to maintain in the future. Most of the additional costs in this change order, around $76,000, is needed for future underground utilities, installation of these utilities and conduits, and services is necessary in the Hangar One project to prepare and secure the most economical utility pathway for construction of a new fuel farm in the future. Does any one of you guys, mayor, city, mayor or council, have any questions concerning this change order? It's basically getting the utilities out in front of this project so we don't have to come back and tear up the site to, to expand for future development. I can answer any questions at this time.
Any questions?
No questions. I move for approval.
Second.
Motion second.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Thank you. All right, we'll move to item 21, the purchase of 290 passenger transit-style school buses.
Director Duke.
Good evening again. We are seeking approval of the contract with MidSouth Bus Center for the purchase of 290 passenger school buses for the quoted price of $112,983 each. One of these will be the second of two replacement buses budgeted for the '21-'22 school year. Due to ongoing supply concerns, we are, would also like to go ahead and purchase the second 90-passenger transit bus available from MidSouth. This will be the first of three replacement buses approved for the '22-'23 school year. The total price of the two buses is $225,966 and will be charged to the County Shared Bond Fund as approved by the council in October of '21, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
If no questions, I move for approval.
Second.
I'm going to abstain. I don't have a conflict, direct or indirectly, but it's, I'm related to one of the people who works here, so I'm just going to abstain.
Okay. All right, we have a motion second. Ms. Brown, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye. Obstain. That was awesome. Sorry, I was reading.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Wait a minute, whoa, whoa, whoa. Which one did you write down? Let's make sure-
Abstain. Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we now have a contract for the replacement of bleachers.
We are seeking the approval of the contract with Toadvine Enterprise to replace the existing bleachers at Northfield and Black Fox Elementary. These bleachers are original to the building and each are over 30 years old. They actually currently do not meet current ADA standards and are in need of replacement. Toadvine was the sole bidder on the, on the project with a total cost of $112,744, and this will be charged to the County Shared Bond Fund as approved by the council in October 2021, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
I'm open for approval.
Can I ask a quick question? Anytime there's only one bidder on a project, I get a little nervous. Is there any reason why that's only, I mean, is it, is there an easy explanation for that?
Yeah, I may defer to Kathy for that. I will say, we've had this struggle throughout the year. So for instance, we actually bid out with, another project was, you know, to redo the gym floors, and we got no bidders. So I think it's really more about what's going on with our market right now than anything else.
And I think you're finding that, we were, we had this discussion the other day on a renovation, it was a charitable organization, about a renovation of a project or whether to tear the project down, and about how hard it is to get people to look at any renovation projects right now, and then how expensive those projects are, which is, I think, something the city's going to be dealing with moving forward on, from a costing standpoint, just how hard it is to get people to be able to take those, those types of projects.
And we're seeing that in several areas across the board.
Second.
All right, motion second. Ms. Brown, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we have a construction contract for floor replacement at Irma Segal Elementary.
We are seeking the approval of the contract with Carp, Carpets by Osborne to replace carpet in 39 classrooms. The existing carpets at Irma Segal Elementary are over 20, are 25 years old and original to the building. Consistent cleaning has caused issues with adhering to the concrete. The carpet is being replaced with vinyl floor tile to address safety concerns. Carpets by Osborne was the sole bidder with a total project cost of $201,224. This will be charged to the County Shared Bond Fund as approved by council in October of '21, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Move for approval.
Second.
Just one comment. Going to the LVT, the vinyl type of floor that you typically see in medical facilities is way better on labor, on cleaning, long-term replacement, so it's a little more expensive than, but way better project.
Absolutely. There were two bidders, I apologize.
All right, motion second.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we'll move to HVAC preventative maintenance contract. This is with street. Ms. Chalis.
Good evening, Mayor, council. Hope to find you guys well this evening. So first thing in front of you would be the approval of the HVAC contract with Lee Company not to exceed the $83,646. Obviously, this is a preventive maintenance contract for HVAC units that will cover over 27 structures across multiple departments, and we're here seeking your approval to move forward with this. Willing to answer any questions you may have.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion second.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we, item 25, we need to purchase some rock salt.
Nobody wants to talk about winter and spring, right? But we've got a job to do. We want to get our barn filled back up, so we are looking for your approval to, to approve the state contract with Morton Salt in the amount of $81,660 to be able to purchase over 1,000 tons of rock salt, which will replenish what we used in this past winter. And I'm here to answer any questions you may have for that.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion second.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we have the purchase of a jet vacuum sewer cleaner.
Mayor, council, again, thank you for the opportunity to come before you. Always like to bring pictures of this stuff. The, we've got a curb truck that has met the end of its useful life, so we're looking at that replacement. We did have purchased this off the Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Agreement at a price of $503,640. We did have $515,000 budgeted. There is a limited warranty on the vacuum body and the chassis.
We plug it off and then we have to vac it out. So it's something that, it's like keeping our arteries clean out there, where we don't get blockages and have overflows into the street. So we'd request your approval.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. The next item, we have lagoon water treatment residuals removals. This is the second renewal.
Yes, sir. This is again, this is kind of an innovative approach we've had to take since the state won't let us just go put these residuals out on agricultural property. This company comes in, they pump out our lagoons, place it in this pumper truck. They use a disc injector to incorporate this into the soil. We do have high lime content in our residuals, so it does raise the pH of the soil. And so the farmers do see some agricultural benefit with taking that acidic soil to a more basic soil. But it is a little more expensive, but this is a renewal, so we knew this price was coming. It was budgeted for FY '22 for the amount of $249,000. So we would request your approval on this contract extension.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. You have item 28, the task order amendment, excuse me, for Smith, Sekman, and Reed.
Yes, sir, Mayor. This, no, no pictures with this one, but we have had our stormwater manager, Robert Haley, retire from the city. And similar to what we did with Steve Tate, our EUM coordinator, who also retired, Smith, Sekman, Reed has hired them and we would like to use them as a consultant on, you know, 20 hours or so a week. It's a $60 an hour rate, but what that allows for Robert Haley to come in and effectively take care of some of the legacy stormwater permitting issues and get our, get our, well, and basically take care of our new stormwater manager that we bring in and hire. So again, it's about 20 hours a week. It is an amendment from the original task order. I think we said the original task was somewhere in the $47,000 range and that was to basically cover Mr. Tate. We're asking for an increase of $127,800. And again, that covers Steve Tate and Robert Haley working a couple, a couple of days a week.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Item 29, update the existing water model.
Yes, sir. Again, we've got a 10-year-old model that's got software that's more of an engineering-based software. It's not as easily handled or managed by operator-level folks. So this new model, we would actually, SSR would come in and calibrate, go out in the field, check pressures, look at the pump gauges. It does offer a lot more benefit in regards to monitoring water age, which is a water quality item. We can start doing unidirectional flushing, which is again, a water quality issue for stagnant lines. We want to make sure that that, that water age stays fresh. And it does enhance the user interfaces out in the field. Another big thing, it integrates with our specific energy software, so certain metrics, pump performance, tank levels, our AMI flow leak sensors can actually integrate through, they're called APIs, they're basically interfaces from one software to another. And it is a, it's a task order in the amount of $48,835, but we see a significant benefit in updating this model so our, our field personnel can actually see benefit from it. So I'm available for questions if you have any.
Move for approval.
Second.
Second. Question is second.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye. Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. I got something to ask you.
Sure.
Something I just have noticed literally today, and I can't remember what we do with
this, the sewer drains on the side of the road, you know, in the curves or the gutters, I guess. I guess because of the buds coming off the trees with, you know, they, a lot of those seem to be really full. I mean, literally on my way here today, there was a lot of flooding and I noticed, which I would have never noticed in my life before this, that, you know, the drains are, are covered up with, with a lot of that leaf stuff. Are we?
That's the stormwater.
Well, it's just, you know, it's like this week, you know, it's just happened with all the leaves kind of finally, I think, coming off and knocking those little buds off. They've gotten stuck. I just kind of noticed it in, like, literally my neighborhood and then down Maple Street on the way here today.
Yep.
Do we, I can't remember, do we have a program that go, where we go through there and knock?
What we do every time it rains on the road is we hold, we assemble the whole apartment, basically, and we divide it up into eight maintenance mounts and those guys go out and they clean those tops off every time it rains. So.
Okay.
Usually, but normally, it's, it's when you get there first time in the morning and it's coming a flood and we're looking to schedule that day if it's, if it's canceled a, you know, something that we may have been doing during construction, we can't get out and it's too wet to do it, so we put those guys on that. So we'll clean them 10, 15 times a year.
Gotcha, yeah.
So they'll get cleaned probably tomorrow, matter of fact, because it's supposed to rain most of the day tomorrow, so.
Perfect. I just, I knew that we had something in place. I just couldn't remember kind of how often, because there was some pretty good pooling in a few spots today. I just want to make sure we're.
And not to mention, too, we have a stormwater vacuum as well. It's on a program and they make their way around the entire city as well.
Right. We do, and, yeah, we, I think water has one and streets have one where they're actually dedicated to cleaning out storm sewer systems.
Perfect.
Good question. All right, any?
Thanks.
Thanks. Any licenses that we have, permits?
We have a special event permit for United Way for May 6th. The applicant has everything in order and staff recommends approval.
Any questions?
So moved.
Second. Motion is, motion is second. Ms. Brown, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. You have recommendations for reappointments to the public building authority.
Need a motion?
Please.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We have, Mr. Laird has other business.
Good afternoon, members, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Thank you for letting me come here at such short notice. Before you, the change order, as you remember, we're building an outdoor sport court at the McFadden Community Center. Phrase one is the construction of a concrete slab, it's a little over 8,000 square feet. Initially, we had bid it out to be either using fiber concrete or reinforced steel, but after securing a surfacing vendor to put acrylic finish over it for a sport court, we found that the preferred method is the reinforced concrete. So there is a cost increase. This is the change order for the reinforced steel to not delay the project. I do want to assure you that even with this increase, that bid is significantly lower than the next highest bidder.
Any questions for Mr. Laird?
If there aren't any, I'll move for approval.
Second.
Question is second.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Thank you, Thomas. Any other business from staff?
We have one more, Mayor. In front of you is a council communication for hangar one grant amendment. This allows the grant, is assisting in building hangar one from TDOT Department, Division of Aviation for $2 million to be extended for an additional year, allowing for construction of that hangar. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Move for approval.
Second. Motion is second.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Any other business from staff?
Next week, we have canceled our workshop for May and I think we'll gather the next week after that to start budget process.
Everybody excited about that?
Always.
Okay.
Mayor, we have tomorrow night starts Jazz Fest, so come downtown. High school bands will be there tomorrow night and then all day Saturday, so come downtown and enjoy Jazz Fest.
All right. Any other business from council members?
I was gonna pass along something for you guys to think about. Last night, a zoning near and dear to my heart came through and I want to make sure and kind of get some numbers out for you guys to be considering. It got deferred. It's an apartment development and commercial building out on Medical Center Parkway. I put some numbers out to the Planning Commission and the people in the audience last night. I'm gonna kind of pass that along to you guys so you guys can kind of be thinking about this and depending on how it gets through, I have no idea what's gonna happen at Planning Commission when it comes back, but they were gonna do some renumbering, but if in fact y'all get contacted, I want you guys to have these numbers so you're up to speed on this. I've been working with Mr. McKnight and his staff over the last couple of weeks or really longer than that to try to help put together kind of a big picture, not just for this particular, not for this particular project by any stretch, but for, you know, just all projects that come through to try to help us understand where we are on our housing mix and kind of what's coming and what we have in inventory so that when we make changes, we'll sort of have an idea of what, where we're headed directionally. But it did, because this one was coming, I, we started digging into kind of what is, what I would call in the queue, which is, you know, it's, it's being built, almost finished,